Okay, thank you everyone for coming today to today's county planning, Cuyahoga County Planning Commission. My name is Michael Dever and this is the August 8, 2024 meeting. Can I call the roll, please?
Mayor Burke.
Here.
Joe Nani.
Here.
Mayor Daley Jones. Director Dever.
Here.
Mayor Gallo. Director Wan. Mayor Kurtz.
Here.
Mayor Orkut. Councilperson Simon. Mayor Weiss.
Here.
Mayor Weelo.
Here.
You have a quorum.
Okay, thank you, thank you. I'm sorry, I didn't have an opportunity to address for today's meeting properly. I, we've been without power, so, and I am sure that our executive director, who lives just down the street from me, she's had issues also, so, but, uh, thank you.
I just wanted to...
Go ahead, Mary.
Sorry, Mike, if I could, Director Dever, if I could just say, I'm sorry I'm not there, I'm not far, I'm upstairs, but I am recovering from COVID, so I thought I would keep you from any remnants I might have and do this this way. So hopefully, all your family, friends, and homes are in good shape. Obviously, we have a lot of mayors who have their hands full, who are not here with us today, and I appreciate you guys taking the time to be here. We do have some businesses that needed your attention this month, and so I am here, and I appreciate you guys being here. So with that, thank you.
Thanks, Mary, appreciate that. All right, are there any comments from the public? Seeing none. Approval of the minutes from the June 13, 2024 meeting, I'm gonna make a motion to approve those minutes. Second for Mayor Weelo. Any comments? Seeing none. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Those opposed, that motion carries. We will go right to the resolutions. Mary?
Thank you. Our first order of business is Resolution 240808-A. Eric Engel, our new, one of our new principal planners, is here to present this matter for you.
Hi, Eric. Good evening, Mr., or good afternoon, Mr. Chair, good afternoon, and the commission members, used to the evening meetings, coming from here, City of Huron here. So, this first order of business is Resolution number 240000, or I'm sorry, 0808-A. This is a resolution authorizing the County Planning Commission to enter into an agreement with the City of South Euclid for some planning services, and this is related to TOD zoning. Essentially, the county planning, we recently completed a TOD overlay zoning guide and TOD business, or best practices manual, as you all recall. That concluded with a wonderful workshop completed by staff. And so based on that work, the City of South Euclid reached out to us to enhance, basically modify some, several districts, the Mayfield Green District and the Cedar Center District, two commercial districts that they feel need enhanced, and from walkability and access to transit perspective, as well as just overall design guidelines. And so ultimately, their goal is to reclassify all those under one TOD zoning ordinance. So this is a zoning map for reference here. So the MG District, the Mayfield Green District is, it kind of acts like their downtown core, essentially, so that's in the green there. And the purple, as well highlighted, is the Cedar, Cedar Center zone that they have. Both of these are bisected by major transit lines, and so, again, just following their lead with wanting to make this more transit friendly, we're happy to oblige that. So, it's just some tasks that we're going, that we're going to be going through with, with these guys. Utilize recently completed TOD study materials, as mentioned, to draft recommended zoning changes. This really is kind of like our first test pilot code, related to the work that we've done previously. We're also going to partner with the city's projects and legal teams, obviously, make sure all of those are in line with ORC, as well as other laws that may come into play. Evaluate recommended zoning changes by testing regulations against those existing lots in, in those districts, in the MG and CC districts. And then coordinate the review process with the city's planning commission, as well as their ARB council and, and the public in general. So working with the planning staff there to get the word out there on this, in order to really kind of just get feedback, right? Want it to be the best it can be with regards to what the folks want over in South Euclid. And so ultimately, the request for the proposal for those planning services will cost $15,000. A hundred percent of that will be paid for by the city. Phases one and two will be charged this year, with phases three and four being charged at the conclusion of the project in 2025, which is expected to be late January. So January 28th, we're expecting that to be concluded. So that concludes my comments. I'll take any questions or comments if you, if you all have any. No problem.
Seeing none. Wes, just trying to get a sense on how to vote on this. Do we need to wait for potential?
Well, I have a couple of concerns. One is, of course, with Mayor Weelo, not her specifically, but I know she's mayor of South Euclid. We've had this issue come up before. Typically advised, those individuals in those places. My second concern, of course, I have a recusal, a less than a quorum. So we have about five.
If Sunny Simon should be walking in the door, I mean, within the next three minutes. So if we held the vote, held off until she got here, I think that...
Right. Including any deliberation, just to be safe.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, and I think, I'm sorry, Wes, you were, you were breaking up a little bit, but I think what we said was we've got a quorum for board action, and a, an abstention is an action by a board member. So if it's not a yea or nay, but I guess if it's, we need approval, majority, then we're close.
Okay.
Because it would be an actionable... Yeah, I think, I think my, my belief, I haven't seen, this has not come up before, so I'm, so I'm trying my best to navigate these waters.
But if Mayor Weelo recuses, it's as if she's not deliberating, voting, or even here for this particular item. So in which case, that would leave us with five.
An abstention, she can't abstain, though.
Right. I, I think she would need to fully recuse, yeah, because I don't believe that she could even participate in the deliberations.
How about we just table the item for now? There's some other items. Well, actually, we have another member here.
Another member. Yeah, I'm fine with sleeping.
Wong, welcome.
Perfect timing.
So, Eric, if it's all right, maybe just do a, a quick summary of the presentation?
Yeah, absolutely.
Do you want me to leave?
I have a recommendation, because you wouldn't be...
For Director Wong, we're discussing Resolution 240808-A.
Yes, so this is a resolution to authorize the County Planning Commission to go into an agreement with the City of South Euclid for a TOD zone update. For their codes, essentially, they're looking at two districts that they want to combine into one transit-oriented development code. It's basically just their kind of downtown, downtown core, their MG District, as well as an outer kind of commercial district, right, on the, the edge of university heights there, the CC District, their Cedar Center Districts. They're looking at just overall enhancements, accessibility to, to transit stops, as well as walkability, and overall design guideline enhancements for, for those districts, so.
Okay. All right, any further questions or comments? Seeing none. All those in favor? Oh, I'm sorry.
Move approval. Second.
Okay, that's been moved and seconded. Any other further questions or comments? All right, seeing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, that motion carries. Thank you very much.
Thank you, guys. We look forward to working with them.
Okay.
Just a big thank, thank you to Eric, because he jumped right into this one, pretty much on his first day, so, thank you, Eric.
Okay, we'll move on to the next item, information, single-family zoning results update. Mary?
Yes, so I'm going to let Patrick Hewitt take this one. As you guys know, we've been working for several years at this point on single-family zoning and implementing changes in our First Suburbs community, and so we've got some updates for you that we'd like to share, so that we can tout our successes here in Cuyahoga County. Patrick?
Thank you, Mary. Thank you, members of the board. You have in front of you this progress on infill document, which is our opportunity to come back. We don't always update folks on all of the improvements that have been made after the fact, so we wanted to take an opportunity today to give an update on the single-family zoning analysis that we completed with and on behalf of the First Suburbs Consortium. Well, I'm gonna go through, through some slides here in a second. I'm gonna invite Jennifer Kuzma, the First Suburbs Director, to give some background and overview to this project.
Thank you, Patrick.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak today. Many of you I know is members of the organization, or just in years of us working together as a region. My name's Jennifer Kuzma, I'm the Executive Director of the First Suburbs Consortium, and we have a number of different areas of focus that we work on. Certainly, advocacy work is very important for us, but other ways we work together is through best practices sharing and regional program development. And through some of the monthly committee meetings that occur, our housing committee had run into the same conversation for a few months about, wow, we've got all these great lots that we can go redevelop on, but boy, it's really becoming a problem to get these things through our processes. We reached out to our colleagues at County Planning Commission with a couple of the cities initially, and at the end of the call, I kind of expanded the proposal to potentially include all 19 member communities, at which time Patrick partially smiled and partially gasped, I think, at the same time. It's been a wonderful collaborative effort. First suburb cities, in many cases, are very similar and also very different. The housing stock in Garfield Heights is quite different from the housing stock in Shaker Heights, but the needs of those communities were the same. For many cities, there is not a defined planning department or even person. For most communities, planning and zoning updates are made, I would say, on an as-needed basis, as things are coming at the city instead of a proactive way to encourage development. So this was a real effort for all of our communities to take a look at what we're doing to make our processes easier to bring infill to our cities. We've really benefited from this effort. We've had a number of communities make some steps already. We have others that I know are talking about it. One of the things that has timed up so well with this has been the state's interest in housing in Ohio, and it's been great to be on the forefront of that discussion and talk about how we've been working on making those code enhancements on behalf of our communities. I cannot thank this board and the staff enough for their help in this work. I have no doubt that we overstepped our scope at time to time, but the Planning Commission staff and leadership was dedicated to providing a product that made this, the, the best possible finished item that we could. We have presented this at numerous APA conferences, both local, statewide. Just last week, we participated in the local APA Advocacy Day to talk about housing needs across Ohio, and specifically here in Cuyahoga County. So it's really been a launching pad to not only make improvements at the cities, but to be able to speak with not only a regional, but now a perspective that we can share with the state as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer.
Can we use this now? Oh, wonderful, okay. So as Jennifer just described, the single-family zoning analysis was really completed in 2023, and it came out with a number of deliverables, which are listed here. One included a development professional survey to really get an understanding of how the development community understood planning and zoning in the First Suburbs. And then the other resources were really for the communities. A code update options report that outlined different ways communities could make changes to address the zoning issues we identified. An infill incentive options guidebook, so the communities could understand ways of attracting new development. A design guidelines guidebook, because we found that almost no communities that had design boards actually had guidelines to follow. So this guidebook outlined what those guidelines could look like. Resources documents that could be handed out to developers, community members, et cetera, to talk about infill, infill development, and an online tool to test some of these changes. What did we find? Some of you may have heard this before, more than 5,300 vacant, single-family zoned lots in the First Suburbs. What we found about zoning, zoning maps are often out of date. Some communities couldn't even find a zoning map, they didn't have a virtual one, it was a, a printed one in City Hall. But really, what was important was looking at the zoning, how disconnected zoning was from what was on the ground. Huge numbers of non-conforming lots. Forty-one percent of lots in the First Suburbs didn't meet the minimum lot size requirements, and even a higher percent didn't meet the minimum lot size requirements in that community. Thirty percent of existing homes did not meet the front setback requirements of the code. So when we look at the vacant lot that we see here, this is in Garfield Heights, actually, how do we make it possible to build on that without having regulatory barriers to do so? So what have we done? Well, there have been a number of communities that have already made updates as a result of this. Warrensville Heights, Brooklyn, Maple Heights, and recently, South Euclid have all, already adopted codes to address some of these issues. The City of Warrensville Heights simply made all buildable lots, or all lots buildable, regardless of area and width requirements. Brooklyn made some major changes throughout their single-family zoning code. Maple Heights reduced the size of their lot requirements. In the City of South Euclid, we were able to work with as part of this process to create an infill overlay district that included both design guidelines and a streamlined review and approval process. They're not done, though, or the First Suburbs aren't done, I should say. Uh-oh. The First Suburbs aren't done, but this PowerPoint presentation, there we go. Four other communities have zoning updates underway right now. The City of Euclid, we're going in front of their Planning Commission on the, oh, go back one, Kevin. City of Euclid, we're going in front of their Planning Commission next week for new residential codes. The City of Garfield Heights and the City of Lakewood are both underway in a complete zoning code overhaul, and we're working with the City of East Cleveland to develop a residential overlay district for the southwest portion of their community, all of which would further the goals of the single-family zoning analysis. Excellent. So what does this mean? Well, code changes have ranged from large scale to small scale. Warrensville Heights, for instance, simply added this text, lots separately owned and duly recorded, prior to the effective date of this ordinance, shall be considered buildable lots. That single line just made every lot in their community buildable without a variance, and that's the number. Changes to zoning across those four communities, just the first four that have been adopted, mean more than 13,000 parcels no longer need a variance for lot size or width to be developed. That reduces red tape, that reduces time, it brings developers to the table. So we're really proud of the changes that we and individual communities with the First Suburbs have been able to do. What does this mean? Well, communities are building new housing. South Euclid is a great example. We've been working very closely with them. Builders are responding to these changes. In South Euclid, there are 56 new infill housing projects that are being built using the zoning overlay that was recently adopted, and there's more than 100 new homes that are projected for construction in the next two years. And importantly, they're ranging in size and in price points, from $270,000 to $400,000 for those already sold homes. This is a, an example home in South Euclid that is one of those 56 new infill. And we really wanted to pull out the actual quote that we have in this document, so I'm gonna read this. This is from Ashley Holloway, the Assistant Director of Planning and Development. Generally, infill construction required multiple variances that prolonged the approval process. This was a barrier to developers, individual home builders, current residents that wanted to improve their homes, and insurance companies that insure existing homes. As a built-out community constructing infill housing on vacant lots and remaining undeveloped land sites is the primary type of housing which is constructed in our city. Infill development is booming since the overlay was adopted. So we're seeing new housing built in our communities because of these zoning changes. We wanted to bring that back, because we often don't come back and say, what did we do with all this information? This is real changes on the ground that mean new homes, new places for people to live. Thank you so much to Jennifer Kuzma, who has been invaluable as a partner and as a friend throughout this process, as well as the individual communities, the land bank that was critical in understanding the developer's perspective in First Federal of Lakewood. We're still available to assist, so other communities that are interested, we are happy to work with you. All of those resources are available for free on our website, countyplanning.us/singlfamily, for download and use. Happy to answer any questions as well.
Thanks, Patrick. Questions?
I just want to make a comment. We now have 145 new homes going up this year, going into 2020, next year. They were, started at 270, but the lowest one is 365. Going for just shy of $500,000. Because of that, two developers, housing developers who have never built in the inner ring suburbs, you know, they're like, outcasts, they're like Kirtland Hills, you know, Willoughby Hills, they called, and they're like, wanna come in, maybe 550, 750. And I'm just sitting there in my, you know, in my office, like, this is unbelievable. But because of what we did with County Planning, it just changed everything. And it was this fast for us. It was that fast.
Quick question, can I? So, did you ask me? Did you give a result of 365?
Because for 270, you have no finished basement, no patio, no deck, nothing's upgraded. The house starts at 270, and then by the time you add everything, 365, 385, 425, 485, you know, it was funny when, when the first house came in at like 365, 385, and Michael Love said to me, oh, they just built a shack in South Euclid, it's $400,000. But the thing that really hit us was, these, these pieces of land, these pieces of land, you know, some of these have been sitting here since the 1960s, think about that, great pieces. But we had all these obstacles, and it changed everything, everything. You know, we, we can't thank you enough. I know, Ashley sent them, but we really...
We were so pleased to work on this, and I'll just add, the house on the front is one that the land bank built. It's beautiful, we got to tour it. It required two variances, but the land bank was able to work through it. Based on the new infill overlay, it wouldn't require any variances. And that's what we want to do, is build houses like this that match the neighborhood, that don't require extra regulatory barriers to build.
In a World War II bungalow street. Deets are popping up, and there are some that look like this front, but it's a ranch. So it fits in. So when you look at it, it's still the peaks and everything, but in working with the Planning Commission, I, it, it just, it was like turning on a light. That was how easy, after we got to that point. I mean, it took us a while, because your council and your planning... Sixteen months.
I don't think it was quite that long, but it was, it wasn't a short process, because we made a lot of changes.
Yeah, we did have a lot. But I thank you.
I, I just want to say, this doesn't happen in a vacuum, and, and the mayor, I have to say, Weelo led this also. And the Planning Commission facilitated this with your expertise, but it was the mayor who was out there networking and was able to bring in, I think, our first developer, and invited them into the community, and, and it's snowballed since then. So it's the mayor and her team also that I just have to call out as the leadership that is the partner with Planning Commission. So thank you.
Absolutely.
It's kind of nice when you can say, oh, and I... Yeah. See, she's walking her dog.
Exactly. Am I, go ahead.
Mayor Burke?
Yeah, I just want to say thank you to the First Suburbs, because I, I think, was in this house right here, I think this was the one that we went toward. And I gotta tell you, the houses on both sides, when, when I was asking, they said, well, this house is 170,000, that one's 170, but this one was 300-some thousand. And I inquired as to who's gonna buy this house, and they said it's already under contract. And I've come to find out, it was somebody coming from Chicago to Cleveland, and we're, we talk all the time about attracting talent to our region. The talent's coming, they're buying these houses. So I was pleased to hear that, because we're going through this, the zoning right now in Garfield Heights, and I see what's going on in Maple Heights, I see the houses they're building in the next community over. So I'm very anxious to get our stuff together, so that we can experience the same success. And I, I thank you all for, for that. Thank you.
I won't repeat everything that's been said before, but I agree 110% with all of it. I would just say one additional thing, that, you know, in a, in an environment where politics and government workers are questioned about their dedication sometimes, and their, their dedication and, and expertise and knowledge, this is exactly what we should be doing. We should be looking at ways that we can assist our residents, make their lives a little easier, and promote growth i- in our community. And it's just a shining example of what we as members of this board, as well as our, our, our day jobs, we, we should be doing. And so, we thank you. I know I had the opportunity to hear you make multiple presentations over the course of the last year and a half, and I learned something new every time you presented. So thank you again for everyone, Jennifer, everyone's efforts, really appreciate it.
And I will add, we are almost ahead of the curve a little bit in Cuyahoga County in terms of zoning reform. This is now something that is being talked about nationally, talked about at the state level, as, as Jennifer Kuzma mentioned, that zoning reform, to be able to unlock more housing, is something that is occurring, and we can already show some results with the TOD work that we, that Eric talked about, that will be working in partnership with the City of South Euclid, continues to open up those opportunities, and we're excited to see that, too.
Outstanding. All right, thank you very much. Thanks, Patrick. Thanks, Director Kuzma, also. Really appreciate it. Okay, Mary, is there anything else? Oh, I'm sorry, the Executive Director's report. Mary, go ahead. You're muted there.
Sorry, sorry, thanks. I won't take too much time, because I know Solid Waste has a big schedule of topics to discuss today as well. But I just think on the single-family zoning, we just had an APA Ohio, the Cleveland Chapter event last week, and this was a report that we were able to hand out to legislators who attended that event. And then as part of the APA National Advocacy Group, I've been asked again to join them in DC in September. So this is a document that will most certainly go with me. We've shared the results with APA National. We wanted to really just be able to capture the success that's happening here, because we hear about all these other counties who are doing such great work on infill housing and zoning reform. And so I think this document, I just want to give kudos to Patrick and the team, because it really does concisely share the information and direct results of the zoning changes. So thank you to everybody on that. So, Kevin, you can go to the next one. Just very quickly, most of you know our Allison Ball, who headed up our HUTZI program, DOPWIC, EnRAC. She unfortunately has left us. She had her last day on July 31st. And so at this point, we have reassigned duties to our existing staff, and we'll, we'll not be posting that position right now. But a big thank you to Maureen, and Megan, and Elaine, and Jim, and Susan, and others who are taking on additional work to make sure that the programs that she was overseeing continue on. So I told her not to be a stranger. She has taken a position with NOACA and part of their grants management section, so we obviously wish her well and will miss her dearly. So she's not far away. But the team's done a really great job, and the timing of getting the HUTZI program launched and getting all this moving ahead as she left. It was a, a team effort for sure, so I just wanted to thank the staff for, for that. A quick update on the East 22nd Street Small Area Plan. I know there was a, a great meeting, what day was that? Tuesday? The Chief Epstein at the City of Cleveland called together a whole bunch of different partners who are doing all kinds of different plans in the City of Cleveland and downtown. And so Joyce, I just want to thank you for your team and your leadership. Patrick and Alex on our team. There's a lot of discussions of what should happen or what could happen on East 22nd Street there between the Inter Belt Curve and the post office. And so, a lot of interest, there's a lot of hands, I guess, working in this area. And so we have been working very closely with Joyce and her team to make sure we don't overdo work. Cleveland State is going to be doing some work for Councilman Starr. The campus district is doing some kind of, an update to a master plan, not starting necessarily in this area, but we're really trying to coordinate the effort so that we can have a coordinated outreach to the several institutions that are there and the stakeholders, so that there's not multiple people coming at them with different requests for data. So we are looking at this, again, in partnership with the City of Cleveland, to do more of an existing conditions strategy. And Alex Long and our team and Patrick have been leading that effort, and so it is gonna continue to have a lot of coordination. I think this is, you know, one of the, the big roles that we at County Planning can play, because we do encompass the county, that we can help communities and various stakeholders make sure that this is an area that is given some attention, given the potential future of the Juvenile Justice Center site that the county owns. And then, you know, there's been talk of the Women's Stalker Stadium, and just everything going on with the Inter Belt. So no shortage of things happening there. So we are happy to be working with the City of Cleveland on trying to coordinate all those efforts. And I would, let's see if Director Wong wanted to say anything about that, but.
Thank you, Mary. I think you covered it very well, but you know, a large portion of this is, you know, coordinating with the key landowners, most of whom you could count on two hands because they're all institutional. And, you know, Central is one of the most segregated and lowest income neighborhoods in Cleveland. And so, you know, wanting some special attention to make sure that, you know, this neighborhood is really connected in with what's happening downtown as well as other neighborhoods. And especially with the East 22nd Street connection over from downtown to Central, wanting to make sure there's a, a proper gateway to which, you know, the, the residents of CMHA, the now, you know, transitioning St. Vincent Property, Tri-C and other institutions kind of have a more knit together neighborhood. I think they also mentioned that the Metro Parks received the largest award to date for their Slavic Village Connector Trail, which will actually go right through that geography from Slavic Village up Broadway to downtown. And so that's another connection point for this neighborhood to be, to be better connected. So thank you.
Thank you, Director Wong. Yeah, and I think it's really important that we, we have been had great conversations with all, a lot of the stakeholders there already who have been wanting to do their own master plan and are willing to kind of work with us and wait a little bit so we can figure out how best everybody moves forward. So we'll keep you posted on that, but ongoing discussions. And I think we're getting close to kind of determine how to proceed. So just a couple of updates on the kind of remaining 2024 budget. And then thinking about 2025, Jennifer did provide a, a nice report too at our last board meeting about where we were with our budget and understanding, having two key hires that we have had this year. We do know that we will have a bit of a shortfall with our budget here. And we do know that we are in conversation with OBM just about the county's budget in general and how we can look to save, you know, dollars through various ways of looking at our budgets. And so we, we do know that we have always committed to, we needed the staff, their key staff that we were able to hire. And so that's something that we stand behind. And so we, we will be short by the end of the year in terms of personnel funding. And so that is something that we've been already having discussions with OBM on, you know, to make sure that we are in good shape for that before the end of the year, you know. And like everything else, I mean, everybody's memberships and professional conference attendance has increased in cost. And so all those costs continue to rise. We also have, you know, just seen higher rates across other things that we have needed to secure for our department. But big kudos to Jennifer. I mean, she does a wonderful job of making sure we're spending responsibly and, you know, making sure we're watching the bottom line. So looking at ways to continue to save money, but making sure that our folks are being able to speak at conferences and attend conferences, professional development. And then, you know, it's just something that we're facing. And so looking ahead to 2025, just starting to flag some things and where we're looking at for next year. So, you know, we did become part of the Neighborly Family, which is a software that, or Healthy Urban Tree Canopy is going through. And so that was a, an add-on to the Department of Development's contract, which is a huge cost savings. And so that is something that we had a five-year commitment for on that program, that software. And so it's something that we have to make sure that we have the funds to cover that, you know, going forward. But feeling confident that we can find that and, you know, we've had discussions in the past about potentially having spending authority on some of our revenues. And so if we need to get to that point, then, then we will have to look at that as well. So that's it for that one probably. And then big thank you to Wesley who's there today. We have been talking at length about bylaws, powers and duties and our board terms. We've uncovered every time I think we, think we solve one issue, we find something else. Our bylaws have been kind of in flux and I know, thank you to Councilman Simon and Mayor Wheelo. We've had discussions about getting those updated and those continue. It needs to happen. We have found some other issues where I think, you know, we've come across a 1990 board resolution that capped my ability to contract at $5,000. And looking if that is something that is still realistic, given the cost of services these days, if it should be higher. And then also thinking about what that language actually meant. Is it, you know, revenues of more than 5,000, a, a total estimate of cost over 5,000? So we've been working through some of that and we'd hope to have a resolution for you this month to look at. But that will be something that's coming in the future. The other thing that we've been looking at is, you know, maybe things that we were silent on in our bylaws that probably needs, should, should be included. And so looking through some examples for that. And so to Mayor Wheelo and Councilman Simon and Wesley, we'll have a meeting again after this meeting. At some point, we'll get something scheduled so that we can sit down and walk through those. But the other thing that we've identified is the way that our board terms have been assigned and approved by council. We want to try and clean up, you know, by our revised code, it's a three-year term. And sometimes what's happening is the term may start in January, but the person's not actually approved by council until, you know, June or something. So we really are trying to get away from this January to December because we always run into the issue for our organizational meeting in the new year that technically there's board members' terms who've already expired, but yet they're taking action at the, at the organizational meeting. And so we're going to try and clean those up. I have a meeting scheduled tomorrow, actually, with Chris Alvarado, who's Regional Collaborations Director and one of the new staff that's helping with legislative liaison to look at how we write any future resolutions for our board terms to make sure that we're compliant with the actual three-year term and that we can stagger these dates so we don't have everything ending on December 31st. We do have seats that expire at the end of December, so that's another part of the conversation. Obviously those can be renewed, but just making sure that we line things up correctly with actual term dates that meet, you know, meet the three-year requirement. So I don't know, Wesley, if you had anything, anything to add for that one?
No, Mary, I think you summed it up. Thank you.
Okay. And then finally, before we turn things over to Elizabeth and her team. As you know, last year we got our new logo. We've gotten our branding and you'll see some staff there. We got, finally got our new logo pins, our little lapel pins. And so Annette has those for each of you today. And so we'd like each of you to have those. The county executive was in our office for a meeting and he asked immediately if he could get one of those. And I guess because he's an alumni, we said, that's fine. So obviously I know you have your own pins representing your own cities, but I figure if there's events that you'd feel comfortable wearing our lapel pin as a board member, I would appreciate you doing that. And again, I just want to thank you all for your time and your service because I know how extremely busy you are, especially given this week's events with these storms. And I know there's a lot on your plates daily in your own city. So I really appreciate your support and I think we've got a lot of great things to come. So with that, I will end my report. Thank you.
Comments from anyone? Go ahead.
One quick thing to add, mainly Wesley, and I completely agree, agree with you, Mary, on the board terms and everything else. But there might be a legal opinion floating around where it indicates that if nobody is appointed to fill the seat, that person can actually take action in, even if their term is expired. We looked into that some time ago. So it may, obviously, yeah, obviously it's not the ideal situation, but it might help from the legal aspects of when actions were taken in the past. So we can talk offline.
And I think you're right because I, the way it says it is that they're, even though they have an expiration date of their term, which could be December 31st, it says that they're actually a member until the organizational meeting, but it's, it's very contradictory. So if we can clean things up, it probably would be best, you know, if we're doing bylaws and other things, it's probably a good time to take a look at it. But I think you're right on a form of legal opinion.
Yeah, I'd like to see that because I know the statute's very clear. It says three years under 71322 of the code. Yeah. And so we, we, as Mary clearly set out, we, we do this thing where we have like retroactively fill a term and, and it's, it's not my preference. I'll just say that. Yeah.
I think because too, if we've already had meetings from January to June before they were technically seated, it looks like on a record that they should have been acting on items that happened since January and they would not have been. Details.
Okay. Thanks, Mary. Any further comments from the board members? Thanks for the report, Mary. Appreciate it. We'll move on. Old business? Anything? No? New business? Nothing? Okay, I'm going to make a motion to adjourn so we can get right into the policy, Solid Waste Policy Committee. So motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second by Mayor Burke. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
That motion carries. Thank you. Can I just kick off the next?
Yep. Kevin should have the deck.
All right. Okay, yeah. So I'm going to call to order the Cuyahoga County Solid Waste District Policy Committee meeting for August 8, 2024. Annette, call the roll, please.
Yes, Mayor Burke.
Here.
Onani.
Here.
Director Dever.
Here.
Director Wong.
Here.
Mayor Kurtz.
Here.
Councilperson Simon.
Here.
Mayor Weiss.
Here.
Mayor Wheelo.
Here.
Mr. Weber. Ms. Whalen. You have a quorum.
Okay, thank you very much. Approval of the minutes from the June 13, 2024 Policy Committee meeting. I'll make a motion to approve those minutes. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilperson Simon. Sorry.
That's okay.
All those in favor, say aye.
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 That motion carries. District updates. We do have one action item and I just want to make sure we have quorum. So in regards to timeline, to make sure we get to that item. So with that being said, district updates. Beth, go ahead.
Okay, thank you. Kevin, could we go into, oh, we have the. We wanted to go over the last few chapters of the draft plan update, which later in today's meeting, we'll be asking you your consideration for the passage of a resolution to allow us to forward this draft update document to the EPA. Per our legislation and format book, we are required to send the EPA a draft copy of the solid waste plan. They have 45 days to review it. We have an opportunity to review those. They're called non-binding advisory comments, bring those back. And then we have an actual public hearing, a written comment period to, to receive additional comments and incorporate those in the plan. So this won't be quite the last time you see this rather long document. But today we wanted to go over the last couple of appendices that we needed to go over with you. And I'm going to turn it over to Amy. She's going to go over kind of the schedule that still remains with the overall plan update.
Before you is the schedule. The date that is highlighted in yellow is today's date, August 8th. For the quorum, as Beth described, to certify this first draft of the plan for submission to the EPA. You will see immediately below that line, there's an appendix T that we've not presented, but that appendix T just contains the support documents, which would be the resolution is so approved today. That would become appendix T for the submission to EPA. And then over the next eight months, as Beth described, there's the non-binding advisory opinions back from EPA, the public hearing and so forth. So the next policy committee action is this, is expected in April of 2025.
So we wanted to, oops, excuse me. Oops, I think I went too far. Hold on a second.
We missed V.
All right, I, I don't.
May I advance one?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Beth and I with technology, I apologize. So appendix V is one we hadn't presented previously. This is an inventory of the open dumps and other disposal facilities that are located. They'll have revised code requires that they be identified and then the environmental crimes task force is charged with investigating those sites. There are no reported ash, foundry sand or slag disposal sites in the county. The map that you see before you just has the lines delineating the five different police districts. The way we receive, the district receives those inventories is based on. Police district.
This is appendix W. This shows where all of our materials go. So in appendix W, we have to provide maps for the EPA to review. All of this is in a textual format in prior appendices. But what this demonstrates is that Cuyahoga County, similar to the city of New York, we export all of our waste out of Cuyahoga County. There are no active landfills within Cuyahoga County. We export to 17 different landfills throughout the state. So we are always very cognizant of making sure that our reduction activities are as great as they can be so as to not impose too much on our neighbors and those other communities. One of the other maps indicates the drop-offs. It's kind of the map, depending on how you look at the furthest back there. That is a map that we have to indicate where the drop-offs are. And per the EPA, a drop-off is considered one that collects five items. So that map is not inclusive of singular item drop-offs such as just paper or just clothing. But we have that map which indicates where there are drop-offs throughout the district that are collecting five recyclable items or more. And then the, kind of the most forward map is a representation of in our district by political subdivision, who is the processor for recyclables? And we've color coded them. We do have, in Cuyahoga County, we're very unique in that we have four recycling sheds that we participate in. And that is Kimball and Rumpke, Republic Services and Waste Management. And you can see those are color coded to get some idea of who is the processor, regardless if you are privately contracting for collection services or if you're still a municipal collector, who is the processor that's getting those recycled? So those are the items we have to include in appendix W.
And then I'll go ahead and begin with the chapters. So chapter one in the plan is an introduction. It just outlines what is required by the state's solid waste plan. So it reviews what the solid waste district is to do. It's to demonstrate that you have access to landfill capacity for eight years from the start of the planning period. It identifies that you're committed to achieving the goals established in the plan and that you have a budget for implementing the plan. It does also highlight the district's core values from their staff, the responsibility, the integrity, the financial stewardship, collaboration and education. They, they do their best educating, empowering and enabling people across the county to reduce, reuse, recycle. Chapter two is the district profile. It's an overview of the general characteristics of the district. So it presents information on the communities and political jurisdictions, population counts and population trends, the available infrastructure to manage waste and recyclable materials and provides a listing and account on commercial businesses and institutional entities and industrial businesses. So just to show on the screen, this indicates the reference to your population and that Cleveland City was the largest political subdivision in terms of population and demonstrates change in population. So chapter three then is the waste generation chapter. And what this does is summarize Cuyahoga County's historical and projected solid waste generation. It's broken down into the residential, commercial and industrial. This is information collected through survey data and then the disposal data from the Ohio EPA. And you'll see up on the slide, the generation for pounds per person per day for their recycling plus disposal is 7.1 pounds, right? And there's a modest projection for that residential, commercial projected increase in terms of tonnage. So it'll increase 4.1%. for that residential commercial projected increase in terms of tonnage. So it'll increase 4.1% or 17,000 tons by the end of the planning period, year 2040. Chapter four is waste management. And this summarizes the district's strategy to manage solid waste that Cuyahoga County has estimated to generate during that entire planning period. Beth mentioned those 17 landfills. There are 17 transfer stations that are listed, 23 compost facilities that receive Cuyahoga County material, and then there are 59 processors of single and multi-material. So these could be scrap yards, Caesar Brokers processors, and such that are listed.
Chapter five deals with the programming that we'll be carrying forward from our existing plan, as well as new programs. And, you know, the new programming was developed based on meetings with our stakeholders to find out what they felt was valuable. In chapter five, the programmings, the programs that we will be carrying forward are going to be probably familiar to most of you. We will be continuing our technical assistance for our communities. Our perennial favorite, if you ask your service directors, are the grants. We will be continuing and working very closely with our Environmental Crimes Task Force. We will be continuing to promote the material marketplace. That's also known as REPLE, and that is hosted by the OEP. And what that is, is that's for the industrial side. And, you know, for example, if you have a byproduct, and you produce this on a regular basis, you can post that in hopes that someone may find that that byproduct, or that spec material, or whatever it may be, may actually be a feedstock you want in your own business. So it's kind of a matchmaking for circularity. We will continue with our Household Hazers Waste Collection Program. Your communities very much appreciate that, and we appreciate them participating. We will continue to keep our website updated with the latest and greatest information for each of your communities. We do post on our website every time your processor changes. We have that very specific information as to the materials that your processor accepts. We have that available on our website, so your residents can access that. We also will continue with our toolkit. So we actually have templates that your communities can use. And they're icons that we've developed, so you can, you know, your staffs can just kind of pluck those from our website and utilize those in their own outreach and educational material. We're gonna continue enforcement activities by helping to fund both the County Board of Health, as well as Cleveland. And we will look at continuing with our Court Community Services litter collection program. Some of these programs, we're going to expand, not only carry forward, but expand. For example, we will be expanding the types and programming acceptable through our grant program. We'll be going from three types of grants, actually, to four, and increasing the dollar amounts. So trying to reach greater programming, more of an operational bent, to really get those materials collected into end market. We will be promoting food waste drop offs. We're still trying to build an infrastructure within the district for that. And we also will be promoting two of the heaviest materials that are in the waste stream. So that would be fiber, you think of your cardboard, and glass. So we are looking to do some singular drop off development going forward. The regional harmonization is again continuing down our path of creating icons that can be utilized on our website, and in the toolkits that we produce, that your communities can utilize. So no matter what community you may be in, if you see, oh, your community takes cardboard, that same icon appears throughout the districts in the county here. And then, again, we had mentioned that we are going to keep our website up to date based on who you're recycling and/or compost, hopefully processor may be. And we want to also kind of venture into the area of sharing tables. We'd like to expand not only food waste, recycling, and composting, but the idea of perfectly good food. How can we get that into the hands of those that are in need, whether that be in communities or in schools? So we want to look at promoting share tables in different venues and institutions. And lastly, we'd like to conduct textile recycling analysis. In the state of Ohio, we have quite a bit of textile warehousing, manufacturing, and we really want to get a deeper understanding of what that looks like, and specifically in our district, and what can we do to help either reuse those products, or find a better use for those as an end product. And we don't want to see those go to a landfill. So chapter five deals with things being carried forward, and then also things that we are looking to implement. The last chapter is chapter six, and that is our budget. And we have to, for all 15 years of the planning period, albeit, we will be back in front of you two more times for a plan update before we ever get to the end of this 15-year planning period. We have to show our budget, revenue, and expenditures to the state. We have to also demonstrate that we keep a positive fund balance. So in those projections, you know, we have to include what we estimate as inflationary factors. We will not be adding any new staff that we can think of currently. The budget in chapter six does project those new programs and the existing programs that we just talked about. So for example, looking to expand our Court Community Services contract to a third team out there, there will be an increase in cost associated with that. You know, we're looking to expand activities in Environmental Crimes Task Force, so there may be some increased fees there. Based on all of that, and our commitment to keeping a 12-month fund balance, we may have to come back to you in 2032 and ask for a generation fee that will not be immediately included in this plan. But we did want to, you know, as you look, in case you have a burning desire to look at the appendices, you would notice that we are projecting that. That would be in two plans from now. So we wanted to bring you up to date on that. These chapters appear at the beginning of our plan update. And really what they are, is they are kind of synopses of what is outlaid in a lot of detail in all of those appendices that appear at the back. So kind of the short version is, if you want to get a flavor of what the plan really is, read the chapters. We don't want to discourage you from digging into the appendices, but it is over 300 pages long, the entire document. So, but the new format does provide kind of a synopsis upfront, more details in the back. And with that, what we would like you to consider today is authorizing us to send this draft document to the Ohio EPA for their non-binding advisory comments. What they do is they read through it, and double-check our numbers, and make any comments if they want to, you know, make recommendations. They have 45 days to do that. They send us back a document with that. And we would review, we'll be reviewing that with you later this year. And we included a copy of the resolution in your packet. If not, I've got a spare in case.
I've got a copy of it here, Beth. Thanks.
So we would ask at that point, that, at this point, excuse me, that, to consider Resolution 240808, which is authorizing the transmittal of the draft solid waste plan to the OEP.
Thanks, Beth. Really appreciate it. Anybody have any comments on the updated draft? Any thoughts?
Just a thought, to just thank you for the thorough explanation.
Yeah, thank you so much. This is a huge task, and you've done really well, getting it synthesized for us and to present to the state. The question I had was a slide Amy addressed. It looked like a projection of a reduction in residential landfill material. Was that, did I look at that correctly? That we're expecting a reduction? That's the goal of the plan, right? So.
On chapter four?
Chapter four or three.
Total waste.
Oh, it's projected to continue increasing in total tons, and then it drops in 2031.
It drops. And that's correlated to what we are planning to do as part of this plan, or is that some other factors?
There are several factors that are built into that one, is hopefully our increase in reduction. We also are projecting a continued decrease in population, which has an effect on everything. So between those two items, that would have, you know, eventually an impact.
So, so reduction in population in the county?
Yes, in the district.
Yeah, I know. Or generally, too, but... Ohio. Well, the state. I mean, the United States.
Although maybe we can entice more people from Chicago.
Yes, with the new housing.
Maybe with the new housing, we can entice more people back.
Okay. Okay, great. No, thank you. It's a lot of work, I know. No, I don't know, but what I can see, detail.
Thank you. Any other comments from anyone? No? Mayor?
Just one question on the budget. I'll admit, briefly, but...
Mm-hmm.
And then, decrease in total reserves, census data reserve.
Yes. Yeah, currently, we have over 3.2 million in our fund balance. And as solid waste districts go, historically, districts don't like to keep an exorbitant fund balance. We feel that the legislature at the state level gets a little itchy with that, when they see districts with very large fund balances. And so, you know, we have an opportunity to do, expand some programming, consume some of that fund balance to do things we haven't particularly done. And then you'll notice, I had mentioned that in 2032, we would possibly be looking at, if we do all the programming that we have projected, that will eat into our fund balance. And if they are still received well, then we might in 2032, need to increase our generation fee from $2 a ton to $2.75, and which, because we want to keep about a year's worth of operating expenses in our fund balance, which is about 1.5 million. So in '31, we fall below that comfort zone, and we want to build that up again. I guess the other thing that I can mention here is, currently, the average generation fee in the state is $4.75 per ton, and we're currently at two. So we have historically strived to remain one of the lowest in the state, but still offering what we believe are great programs. And so, you know, even if we do increase this in a handful of years from now, our generation fee from two to $2.75, you know, we'd still be one of the lowest in the state. So, but yes, we are consuming some of that fund balance. Yep.
Thanks. Any other further comments, questions?
Can you, can you direct us to where the draft is posted, if it is posted somewhere?
We have not posted. We did send you a PDF version of the document. We won't typically post that until we get the non-binding advisory comments back from the district, or excuse me, from the OEP. And because then we have to post it for our public comment period, which is 30 days.
Okay.
And we'll probably be reaching out to all of you. We typically try to do a public meeting, kind of in each of the quadrants, four areas of the district. So once we get the non bindings back, then we will post that on our website.
Understood. Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Thanks. I'm gonna make a motion to approve Resolution 240808. Second that motion. Second by Mayor Kurtz. Any further comments? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you. Thank you very much, Beth.
You're welcome. And we can send you a copy, too. Okay.
Okay, thanks. Any district announcements, by any chance? Nope. Any...
Oh, I'm sorry.
Just, it was an agenda.
I was ready to run away. I'm sorry. We actually do have one quick announcement. I didn't list it on here, because it occurred after we sent the agenda out. So we have presented our first Business Champion Award. So this was a program that we developed, and we actually launched it in 2023. And it's, it's different levels. There's a green level, there's a gold, you know, and a platinum. And the business award varies. It just focuses on solid waste and reduction. So we're not looking at, you know, energy consumption or anything like that. But the Holden Arboretum, the Botanical Gardens, was our first awardee. And please do visit our website or Facebook. There's some great pictures there. And Doreen Schreiber, who is our business specialist, she's the one who developed this program. And we will have another five coming online this year. So American Greetings will be the second company to which we award, both of which, the Botanical Gardens and American Greetings are at the platinum level, which is the top level. So they are doing everything physically possible to reduce truly what they are sending to the landfill. So, and we have created some very neat plaques, which will be individually created for the businesses to reflect their individual businesses. So if you do get online, you'll notice that the one that Holden Arboretum has, and the one that American Greetings will receive shortly, look a little different. But we wanted to do that because we are using upcycled materials to make the plaques, so.
That's great, Beth. Thank you. Any, anything else? Seeing none, but thank you, Beth. Really appreciate all the good work you guys are doing over there at the Solid Waste District. Any other further discussion items? Seeing none, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, everyone. We stay.
Thank you, everyone.